All this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you will please stand for invocation and pledge.
Good evening, everyone. Let us pray. Our Father which art in heaven, once again, will summon ourselves in the seat of government of Cartersville, Georgia to do the business of the city. Once again, we ask for guidance and wisdom as we make decisions for our citizens. Father, we worship you, we praise you, we lift you up, and we know you'll lead us in the right direction. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. Pledge, leading to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Rink, roll, please.
Carrie Fives, Ward 1, here. Jay Seb, Ward 2.
Here.
Carrie Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Pooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Carrie Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Alyssa Cornell, Ward 7. Here.
Thank you. Julia, first order business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from June 11th. You've had an opportunity to look those minutes over. Now would be the time to make any additions, corrections, or edits. If there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Minutes are approved unanimously. Mr. Morgan, if you would get us started this evening with a first reading of our amendment to the utilities ordinance regarding electric rates.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and Council. We bring before you a recommended amendment to these ordinances. It does address our base charges, administrative charges across all of our rate classes, and it also does clean up some language that we realize needed to be updated at this present time. So we want to bring that for you for this first reading and ask that as you look at it, by the second reading, if you have any questions, let us know, please.
Okay. Council, you've gotten this shortly before our meeting. We had a chance, if there are any discussion or questions on this particular item. If there's none, we will move along. This reminder on the top, our next council meeting will be July the 2nd, since the 4th is on a Thursday. So council will have a second reading and a vote on July 2nd regarding this amendment. Thank you, Freddie.
Thank you all.
And Mr. Menino, if you'll get us started with AZ 24-03, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Both cases have been properly posted and advertised. There appears to be no conflicts of interest, and this case was also based, reviewed based on the standards for exercise of zoning powers. With that said, this is a proposed annexation and zoning of two small tracts along Highway 113. They appear to be remnants of old pieces of property that were purchased for the construction of Highway 113, and the parcel behind these parcels is currently zoned heavy industrial. They're looking to go ahead and annex this and make it part of the parcel behind it. I believe it's approximately three and a half acres. The smaller of these two parcels is .42 acres, with the other one being .48 acres, excuse me. And with that, Planning Commission did hear this, have a public hearing on it, and did recommend approval of the annexation resulting to the heavy industrial zoning district.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Randy at this time on this item? Thank you, sir. So I will open up a public hearing, the zoning portion of the request of AZ 24-03, and ask anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, to do so at this time.
Carl Lugeon's, 114 Old Mill Road. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Menino did describe this very well. I believe it's two parcels, Randy, on that map. It shows that y'all highlighted one, but it's that one and the small one that's adjacent to it. One is .45 acres, and the other one is .49 acres. They're very small parcels, or, you know, less than a half acre, but their configuration, the way they are, they're very narrow, so there's really nothing you can do with it. The same owner owns the three and a half, 3.7 acre tract behind it, which is zoned heavy industrial. At this point, they don't have any, they don't really have any plans on that corner, but as Mr. Menino said, one of the adjoining zonings is heavy industrial, so therefore we're just bringing it in as what it is now. We fully suspect it'll be some sort of commercial use in the future, but, and those were remnant land, pieces of land that when they built the highway or widened the highway through there, they left, they kept, left these two narrow slivers. So I'm here to answer any questions, and just, we would, obviously, it's not a final reading today, but I'm here to answer any questions, and of course, we would like a...
Any questions for Mr. Lugeon at this time? Thank you, sir. We'll continue the zoning portioning of the hearing for AZ 24-03, and again, ask anyone wishing to step forward, speak for or against, to do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the zoning portion of that request and open up an annexation request, annexation public hearing for the request AZ 24-03, also making note that any of the comments included in the previous public hearing relative to the zoning will be carried over to this hearing as well. That being said, anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against may do so at this time.
I'd just like to reincorporate, Carl Lugeon, I'd just like to reincorporate my statements from before.
Thank you. And seeing none other, I'll close the annexation public hearing for AZ 24-03, and again, council will have another public hearing and take it up for consideration at our meeting on July the 2nd. Moving on, Mr. Menino, to AZ 24-04.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed de-annexation of a .29 acre sliver of a tract that was the old water department office building there. The southern portion of that tract has been sold by the city to a developer that's developing a residential development in the county at Walnut Grove Road and Cummings Road, and I'm pretty sure that it will be used for improvements to that actual intersection. With that, Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on this and did recommend approval of the de-annexation request.
Thank you, Randy. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Menino at this time? Thank you. So I will open up a public hearing for AZ 24-04 relative to the de-annexation request, and again, ask anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against, to do so at this time.
Yeah, Carl Lugeon's, 114 Old Mill Road. I'm here on behalf of the applicant to represent the annex, the de-annexation of this tract of land. It is part of a development that is being planned in the county. The original development of the two parcels that were, are in the county, therefore, it made sense for this one to, that is, of such small acreage, just to be de-annexed into the county, incorporated into that development.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? In our work session, there was a little bit of discussion about the incorporation or how the, the trail that the city has in that area, I know that there might be some alterations to the route of that, but just wanted to confirm it will be...
Correct. Currently, the trail's on an easement, so that's granted to the city, so anything we do to that will happen, and there's a plan to reroute that. The ultimate goal is to try to incorporate that trail with, ultimately, with some living and commercial, boutique commercial uses where you see people can get off and on the trail at that location. So I think it would, what we're, we're trying to plan is a benefit as a whole, but yes, we would have to come back to the city and request that easement be moved.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Thank you.
Thank you.
Continuing the public hearing for AZ 24-04, the de-annexation request more specifically, and again, anybody else wishing to step forward may do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the de-annexation hearing for AZ 24-04. Once again, another public hearing and council consideration at our meeting on July 22nd. Mr., excuse me, July 2nd. Thank you. I had it written down, I just can't read. Mr. Lovell, you have the next item, I believe.
Yes, Mayor, this is a second reading of an amendment to the malt beverage package and outlet camera ordinance, which is necessary due to changes in state law. It is recommended by staff for your approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Reinhardt, you've got the next handful of things, and I'll say it ahead of time, we tend to move kind of quickly through certain things. There's been an awful lot of time, care, and study done by everybody on staff, city management and the city council, on these next few items. We might move expeditiously through them, but it's only because we've been well prepared. So that being said, floor's yours.
Honorable Mayor and Council, this is the second reading of the proposed 2024-25 budget ordinance. There have been no changes since the first reading, and just to give you a little bit of information regarding the budget, the proposed budget is a balanced budget. It increased $57.2 million over the fiscal 2024 budget. That equates to about a 26.33% increase. Proposed budget includes salary adjustments, no increase in the city's property tax mileage rate, an increase in health insurance premiums for both city and employees, and a small increase in the water and sewer rates. I recommend approval of the proposed fiscal 2024-25 budget as presented.
Thank you. Just a note relative to the rate increase for water, which I know we'll talk about in a minute, but historically, as you know, the city's gone up about four to five percent every single year to kind of keep up with maintenance, and again, it's, to me, it's the right way to go. It's what we've done for several years and on a good path with that. That being said, any other questions or discussion? If there's none, I'll turn it over to council for consideration.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. Next item, Tom.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Council, this is the second reading of the 2024-25 Water and Sewer Rate Ordinance Increase. There have been no changes, again, since the first reading. A little bit of background on this one. Proposed fiscal year 2525 budget includes an increase in the water and sewer fund to help address the maintenance and capital issues of the water fund. It is a 5% increase in the residential water and sewer rates for both inside and outside the city limit customers. The 5% increase will allow the water department to continue the maintenance of the existing water and sewer systems, as well as update and expand the water and sewer system to fulfill needs of existing customers and future customers. For residential customers, the water and sewer rate increase equates to 15 cents per 1,000 gallons used by the city residents. The total estimated increase for residential water and sewer customer is $1.27 per month for 7,000 gallons consumed. I recommend approval of the proposed water and sewer rate increase to begin July 1st, 2025.
2024.
I'm sorry?
2024, you mean?
2025.
2025.
As you and Tom alluded to on this, the water and sewer ordinance, I do recommend it for approval. Obviously, we feared during visioning over the last several months with Sydney that we're going to have expanding on the water treatment plant and the water pollution control plant over the next couple of years, and these, aside the maintenance, this will help with...
Well, we also haven't even really talked on any of it about unfunded mandates and increased testing, and again, some of those, most of those are good things, and we certainly want to have a safe water supply, but those things do cost money, and those requirements are not optional, as most requirements are not, so. That being said, any other discussion or questions? If not, chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item for you.
This is a little bit out of order, but we're going to go with it. Tonight, we'll be discussing the financial report for April 2024 and comparing to April 2023. In the general fund, revenues increased over last April by $19.8 million. Expenses increased by $2.8 million. Local option sales tax increased by $764,000. Billing permits and inspection fees increased by $73,000. Water and sewer fund revenues increased over last April by $1.1 million. Expenses increased by $11 million, I'm sorry, $11.7 million. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased debt service expenses, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. In the gas fund, revenues decreased over last year by $11.1 million. Expenses decreased by $10.6 million. This is due to decrease, I'm sorry, decreased, due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchase gas, decreased capital expenses, decreased debt service expenses, and increases in the transfers to the general fund. In the electric fund, excuse me, revenues increased over last year by $3.4 million. Expenses increased by $2.5 million due to increased, decreased personnel expenses, increased cost of operating expenses, increased cost of purchase electricity, increased capital expenses, and decreased transfers to the general fund. In the stormwater fund, revenues increased over last year by $153,000. Expenses decreased by $92,000 due to decreased personal expenses, decreased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. Solid waste fund, revenues increased over last year by $257,000, and expenses increased by $74,000 due to decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. And finally, in the fiber optics fund, revenues decreased by $929,000. Expenses increased by $44,000 due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased debt service expenses, decreased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. And... The cash position for the month of April are the total restricted cash balances increased, total unrestricted cash balances increased, total restricted cash balances also increased. The SPOS funds for the month of April, SPOS 2014 is $231,991.10. SPOS 2020 Fund, 12 million, $21,084.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, as Tom pointed out, obviously, the city's in good financial health, I just wanted to point out on the 24 million, 24.6 million general fund, that includes the 16, $16 million that we received from the sale of industrial park lanes there, so it is something that obviously is a return on investment, but you take that out of the equation, we're still doing very well in the general fund. The only one I would share with you in my memo is the electric fund. If we didn't have the year-end settlement, we would have, we had a loss, but all the other funds are doing very well.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments or discussion needed on the finance report? Thank you. Tom, final item for you.
Yes, sir. Honorable Mayor and Council, this is the contracts and agreements for performing services for 2025. These contracts for performing services are those agencies that are awarded funds from the city each year on annual budget, on an annual basis. You've got the list in front of you, but I won't go over those. These contracts will be budget, are budgeted in the fiscal year 2025, and I recommend approval of the contracts for performing services as presented.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? If there's none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Tom. Mr. Porter, before you start, I'm going to entertain a motion to add four items to the agenda. All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Four items added. Continue on.
Yes, sir. The first item is with the CBD, Lake Point Marketing. They have requested the city to contribute some funds to allow to, at the baseball building, more marketing down there. If you recall, a couple of years ago, you approved that inside the Lake Point building there, basically that this would be coming out towards the product development funds in the amount of $18,125 for the city's contribution, the county's also matching that, and after the first year, the CBD will continue to fund that operation.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Next item is their bonding authorization with Park County SPOS renewal. As you recall, we're going to be going to the voters in November for the SPOS referendum, and we need to have some language in there, work with our financial advisor, if this is the annual disclosure letter, which is required by the federal government to allow us to work with that. It will have some language in there in the bond, in the referendum, if we were to issue debt, if we wanted to borrow money ahead of time to complete some of those projects. I recommend approval of this letter.
Thank you. Any discussion? If there's none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Next item is the Rotary Club, that is our annual vlog for celebration, recommended for your approval. The contribution this year is $7,000.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Wilson, you're up, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Unfortunately, last week, all three of our commercial front-loading garbage trucks went down. We were able to get one back out of, temporarily out of service, or out of repair in order to put it on the road to be able to serve our customers, but in doing so, we felt like it was necessary that we try to find another vehicle in order, and we did call around. The only place we could find that actually had one available now was a commerce, was a premier sales and rental company out of Cleveland, Ohio. They were able to deliver one to us and lease it for 30 days for an amount of $13,200. We, we actually have it on site now, so it is ready to go, and we will utilize it while we were repairing all our other vehicles. This is a non-budget item that we paid for out of the FY24 equipment lease line item. Thought Works recommends approval of this leased vehicle for 30 days at an amount of $13,200.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, sir.
Thank you. As mentioned, we have some repairs. Two of our vehicles are significant enough, we do need to get approval for those repairs. The first one is our 2017 Mack front-loading commercial truck. The rear end has significant issues, as you can see in the pictures. The, this is our backup vehicle. In order to repair it, it's going to cost us $19,000. This work will be done by our City of Cars will Garage. The second vehicle is our 2020 Mack. It has a cylinder replacement that is needed done for it. It's Packer. This actually, work has been completed at this, at this point. It's, it was done by Waste Build from Lithia Springs at a cost of $8,200. Both these repairs are needed to, to make our commercial fleet complete, and we will pay for this out of our solid waste division, the maintenance vehicle and equipment line item. We do recommend approval of needing repairs.
Thank you. Any questions for Wade? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Wade. Chief Carter, you're up next, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I bring before you tonight an annual renewal of our Vector Solutions software. This is a cloud-based software that handles all of our record management system, including all of our training equipment, and also reporting for compliance to Georgia Firefighters and Standing Training Council. This is a budgeted item in the amount of $12,405.83. This is allocated into the new FY24-25 budget.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeLeone, you are up, sir. No pressure.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the 192 three-quarter inch water meters needed by the water department for restock. This order includes a census smart points for single and dual meter settings. Kendall Supply, the provider for this equipment, has quoted a price of $62,034. This is a budgeted item, and it's recommended for approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Mike? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Thank you, sir. Yes, this is a new flow meter console for the high-service pump station number one at the water treatment plant. The original flow meter, which was installed in 2007, has failed and needs replacement. Accusonic, the provider for this equipment, has quoted a price of $42,178. This is a budgeted item, and we recommend this for approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, Mike.
Sir, this is the design bidding and construction support for the replacement of approximately 8,000 linear feet of galvanized water mains in the Pioneer Trail subdivision. GMC, the engineering consultant, has submitted a price of $128,300. This project is included in the fiscal year 2425 budget and is recommended for approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Final one for you, Mike.
Sir, this is the design bidding and construction support for the replacement of approximately 1,900 linear feet of galvanized water mains on Cherokee Circle and Indian Trail. The water department has completed the preliminary design. The engineering consultant would complete the detailed design and construction management. Switzer Engineering has submitted a task order price of $91,000. This project expense is budgeted in the fiscal year 2425 budget, and we recommend this for approval.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I just want to say, I appreciate the work that's being done there on Cherokee Circle. I know we had a lot of issues with the water there, and I know the water department's been working really hard to work that out, and so I appreciate this replacement, and I know it affects a lot of folks up there on the hill, so I do appreciate this.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
And I got a second. All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
That's a creative way of doing it. I didn't say there was any way I could go faster than she was getting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Lovell, you are up next.
Yes, Mayor, the first one is an easement for SK Battery America's service line. It is recommended by staff for approval.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And now for those added items. Mr. Lovell, I think the first one's an easement agreement?
Yes, agreement for easement acquisition for 711 Martin Luther King Drive. It is recommended by staff for your approval.
Any discussion? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is a certificate of dedication.
Yes, Mayor, the next one's certificate of dedication to maintenance agreement for Michelle Drive Apartments. It is standard form, and it is recommended for your approval by staff.
If there's no discussion, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Lovell, final one for you, resolution, is resolution.
Yes, Mayor, the last one is a resolution denying a claim that was made against the City of Cartersville school system for some silt infiltration on an adjoining property. Y'all already denied this claim back in 2022, but they've sent a new demand letter to the school system, so in abundance of caution, I'm asking the city to deny it at this time.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Porter, you have the final item tonight.
Yes, Mayor, this is the annual renewal of all travelers and delivery mutual property and casualty insurance coverage, as well as our work of compensation insurance coverage. To receive this information on the final number this afternoon, we recommend this for your approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Is there any other business that needs to come forth, council, this evening?
You may want to say the date and time of the next meeting, since it is different.
Very good. Thank you for that.[1771.84] Thank you for that.